Okay, Rabbit, what I was saying is we need to do a pilot program. Take one building, whatever building has the most complaints in terms of the roaches, and do this intense treatment that the pest control guy was just describing. It's about seven to eight thousand dollars for the building. And then come back at the next meeting to get a full report and analysis or evaluation on how well that treatment went. So can you, would you care to make that motion? Okay, good. Well, it's a, we're gonna start in the next couple of weeks, but because the notices have to go up first throughout the building to let people know if it's happening. And then by next meeting, we'll have the full analysis. So Rabbit made the motion, probably would like a second. And so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, any objection, hearing out, it's approved. Okay, thank you. So we'll hear back from you.
Yeah, as soon as we get the information from Dan, we'll get a quote over and we'll have it all.
I'll have it for you this week.
We don't know yet. It's based on the complaints that have been received at the office.
He's coming to Zurich, he's running away.
Okay.
We're not running away, we're used to the bugs, so if there's anything in there, we can take care of it.
When the rats leave El Doyes, are they coming out and then they die or all of the things?
Okay, so the goal is to kind of force them out of the building, because what we believe is that there was a breeding population within the building. And with that many rodents, there was probably a breeding population in there. So we're forcing them out of the building. We set up a kill zone around the outside of the building, so that they hit these baits when they come out, and then they're gonna go find, generally what they're gonna do is go to water and die near water. Because they're gonna eat, you know, they need to drink some water, because it dehydrates them, and then they're gonna...
They're coming from the water.
So they're drowning in that lake, but they're...
Not necessarily in the lake, and you gotta remember that there's a lot of predatory birds and other animals out here. Anything that dies is probably gonna get eaten by something else.
Okay, thanks. By the way, what was your last name?
My last name is Spear, S.P.E.E.R.
S.P.E.E.R. And what was your title?
I'm the account manager.
For Pest Logic?
For Pest Logic, correct.
Okay, well, thanks, Al, appreciate it. Thanks for coming out, and we look forward to seeing the results of that.
No problem, thank you very much, folks.
Okay, next item, actually we have to go back now to elevator modernization. Uh, Dan?
Okay, um, as I reported, you know, last month, the elevators were all inspected, and they were inspected by a county inspector assigned by the county, wasn't anybody from the elevator maintenance company that we have working here, and, uh, the Interlochen, we brought up that, uh, they needed a modernization, because the PC board on there in that control room is cracked, and to put in a new PC board is an upgrade. It's kind of like upgrading your computer system and expecting all your old programs to work with it. It doesn't, this doesn't happen with this, so they have to replace other equipment. All of that is in the process of being ordered. It should be here within the next couple of weeks. They will start doing the modernization on there. It's going to take some time, because they don't wanna completely shut the elevator down, so they will be working during the day, doing as much as they can during the day. Then when they leave at night, they will be, make sure that the elevator is still running, so that it's working. People come in while they're working, they'll stop what they're doing, get the elevator to take them up wherever they need to go. The inspector also came up with four other buildings that, according to their estimate on the inspection, have the same problem as the Interlochen building. I believe that was the Nottingham, I think...
Bordeaux. Bordeaux, Bordeaux, Saint-Maurice.
Yeah, it could be. I have them here, I can look at them. This is Edelweiss, uh, no, not Nottingham, Nottingham is okay, well, Nottingham.
Saint-Maurice is one.
Heidelberg. Zurich. Yeah, those are, that's it. Those are the four. Unfortunately, it's very expensive. It's over thirty-one thousand dollars for each modernization. The process is, as I said, it's, it's going to take time, because otherwise they have to shut them completely down, and being that there's only one elevator per building, they don't wanna do that, so they're gonna have to kind of do it in piecemeal work to get them done. Right now, we're waiting on the Interlochen to get started. I'm going to speak with the county, or the, yeah, the county, and ask for an extension, because they only give you ninety days to get a violation corrected. And there's just no way that it's gonna happen in ninety days to get all of these elevators modernized. So I'm in the process of filling out the request for an extension. Also, it was brought up to me that maybe we should have another company come out, and based on what they see on the violations from the county, have them do their assessment of whether these other buildings need to have a modernization, or is it something less than what our company is saying that that constitutes? So I contacted Motion Elevator and asked them what it would cost to have them come out, take a look at this, based on this, and tell us, give us an estimate. I have not heard back from them yet. I'll try calling them again tomorrow and see if I can get them to move out here on doing that. But that's what's going on with the elevators. There's other minor things with the elevators. As I mentioned, last month, I think it was, the only elevator that had absolutely no problems was the elevator in St. Moritz. Waiting for the certificate from the county to replace that in the elevator itself. We also sent one other one in, I don't have it in front of me now, but they've already sent one other one in, telling them that that one, the minor violation, which was telephone not working in the, in the, in the car, has been corrected. And so I'm waiting on the certificate of operation from the county on that one also.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
All right, so my question is, okay, you said that how many of these elevators are recommended in the Express Elevator Report as requiring or recommended for the full modernization?
I believe there's a total of five.
Including Interlochen?
Including Interlochen, yes.
So Interlochen was already kind of a given, right?
Right.
But then what were the other four?
Edelweiss, Bordeaux, Nottingham, and Heidelberg.
Not, and Zurich, oh, and Zurich, okay.
He didn't say anything about the Zurich, and we know that it needs it.
Wait, that's six. That's six. How many, Dan, I need, I need an exact number.
Okay, so we have Interlochen.
Okay, you have Interlochen, you have Edelweiss, you have Nottingham, Heidelberg, Zurich, not Bordeaux.
Not Bordeaux?
Not Bordeaux.
Okay.
Bordeaux was the one with the pump problem.
All right, so first of all, the, the minor ones, okay, how much would those cost on average?
That's basically minimal.
Like a thousand or...
Yeah, it's probably under that, and a lot of it is just things that we need to do. We need to mark contactors and switches, so that they're identified.
Okay, so did you say that you wanted, you were trying to get Motion Elevator to look at the five, the, I guess it's the...
The other, yeah.
The other four, right? The four?
Right.
Just those four, right? Because we don't want to look at all of them.
Right, right.
If, you know, we don't want to do all of them.
And see if they believe that it does require a modernization.
So in other words, we want, we're trying to get a second opinion?
Yes.
But they're not our elevator contractor, so obviously we would need to pay them, it wouldn't be considered part of, obviously, the contract with, with Express. Express would do it free, obviously, because they're the contractor, that would be part of their role to inspect, correct?
Yes, they're, they're the ones that are saying we need the modernization.
So Motion Elevators, since they're not our contractor, we would have to pay them something. Do you have any idea how much that would be?
No, I, as I said, I can't let, let the message with them to, you know, about it, and I haven't heard anything back from them yet.
Yes.
John, I asked Dan to do that, it's really just getting a second opinion.
I agree with it, yeah.
And we have the, we have the violation reports, it's just a matter of going, what is it, the Motion Elevator going to them and saying, "Look at, here are our violations, what's it gonna cost to fix?" And it's just, it's getting a second opinion, someone to express.
Um, so is, is that, wasn't that one of our previous elevator companies, or the name, or we saw their bid?
Yeah, we had asked them to bid on being our elevator company, and they never responded.
Because I remember that name.
Yeah, 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 I know. That's why I went back to them, because I know, I looked them up when we were first...
Can we look at some other companies that I'm not responding?
Yeah, I can, yeah.
So, so basically, we're kind of under the gun right now, because we have, did we present this to the county already? This report for the five, or what?
No, I presented the one for Interlochen.
Interlochen only?
Okay, because that's what we signed.
So we don't need, we don't need to tell them yet about the rest?
They don't, they know about all of this, because when the inspector came out, he filed all of those reports.
That's what I'm saying. These reports are filed with the, with the county, or the city?
No, not those reports. These, these...
Okay, basically, what I mean is, what does the county know?
This is what the county knows.
Which is what?
In this case, it says inside of the car, emergency signal. Okay, that was telephone, the telephone was repaired. But then when you get into the machine room, you see where it says controller wiring, fuses, grounding, et cetera, controller has illegal jump point. That's why they have to replace the control PC board.
Okay, what I'm, what I'm saying is, do they know about these other one, two, three, four elevators?
Yes.
They, they know that, that our company is recommending that we do a modernization?
No, they just know that we have these violations. They do not know that they're, we're being recommended to do it.
Okay, okay, so I got it. So, so, so we do have a little bit of time, a little bit of time to try to find some other company that will come in and give us a second opinion. So can we get at least one or two, get in contact with at least one or two more?
Yes.
In case Motion doesn't respond?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll look tomorrow morning at it.
So do we have anything to approve today? Because I think we already approved the...
No, you approved, you approved all of this last time.
So we don't need to do anything today?
No, not on that. It was just an explanation.
You already, so you already know that, to contact another couple of...
Right, right.
So there's no, no motion on?
No.
Next item, Dan?
I have a question.
Yes?
When are the violations supposed to be corrected by?
Unless I get an extension, it's ninety days.
From when?
From when?
From when, it was from...
Two thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
Fifteen?
Yeah. It was from last month on the seventeenth.
Is it for all the elevators? Is that the ninety days for all the elevators?
Yeah, and a lot of them, like I said, there's very minor ones, we can, we can get them done in-house.
Okay, all right, so anyway, we need to move on, because the next item?
The extension act, since it's...
No, yeah, okay. But we should, usually, they're usually pretty good at giving, I mean, if they know that we've already begun the process with the Interlochen, they're pretty good about giving us extensions, right? Is it the city or the county?
It's the county.
It's the county, okay. Anyway, we have to move on to jet ski trailer rule. Dan, you know what? Instead of you explaining, because there's been a lot of baggage forth, and somebody seems to have come back from the dead. I don't know if you heard, I got that email, but apparently, I want, I want to give a little bit of history to this item, because it seems like the mood in this place changes quite drastically sometimes over the course of a few months. But for those of you who weren't here, I believe it was maybe four months ago, we had a gentleman who spoke about his jet ski, and at the time, he was getting emails from the office or from the security manager, telling him he needed to remove his jet ski, which was parked at the time out behind the Nottingham. Okay, so the gentleman came to one of our meetings, he spoke in Good and Welfare, and he's, he, he proposed, and as a compromise, to move his jet ski to the tennis courts, and then pay the association some monthly rent. At the time, the people that were here, they say, "Why should you pay anything?" I'm not gonna name anybody, but they're not here today, so I don't want to embarrass them. "Why should you pay anything?" And then another gentleman who was here, that was not here tonight, "Yes, that's right, we shouldn't pay anything, it's not fair, and the place to park it is not by the tennis courts, over by the Nottingham." So the board said, "Okay, well, that's the consensus, it seems to be what everybody wants, that everybody's happy with." And so we said, "Okay, fine, we'll let you park it by the Nottingham," because that's the consensus of the membership that showed up. Chapter seven eighteen has a rather extended process to approve any rule change. So because that rule change wasn't on the agenda, we have to by law post it again, well, it wasn't posted in the first place, we have to put it back on the agenda for the next meeting. That's supposed to, so people know that this particular item is gonna be heard. So the following month, we had it on the agenda. Again, by this time, the gentleman had gone back to Europe, and we had it on the agenda. The same number of people showed up, there was almost no discussion, it was just, "Okay, this is what we decided last meeting, we approve it." And then there's the next process, the next step in the process, because it's rather, as I said, extensive, we then have to mail out, mail out the proposed rule change to the entire membership, post it with fourteen days' notice with the proposed rule text, okay, which was done. And actually, we missed the deadline for the last meeting somehow, because it wasn't mailed out quite in time, so then, that's why it's on this agenda instead of the May agenda for final approval. In the course of those four or five months, however many it is, the mood completely changed, okay? And maybe because it was now in everybody's mailbox, and it was in all the buildings, and the language, and then people suddenly woke up and said, "This is horrible, we don't want this." But somehow, it was described as being, being all, you know, something that I just did on my own, when it was actually three meetings, and everybody showed up, they were the ones that were screaming, "Yes, let him know, it's not fair, this is an injustice, why should he pay anything, and it should be by the Nottingham?" And it's the very same people, I want, like I said, I don't want to embarrass anybody, because they're not here, but I'm getting emails from the very same people saying, "This isn't fair, if they're gonna be parked over there, they're taking up parking spaces, and guess what, they should be paying." So this isn't something that I pushed, I just described, right. So sir, why don't you come up and, I'm gonna invite you to come up, please, no, sir, these people can't hear you, as hard, loud as you, okay? You can come up to the microphone here, and, and please, hey. Could you first say your name and where you live?
I'm gonna introduce me again, please. My name is, good evening to all, my name is Danielson Correa. I have been a resident of the International Village for sixteen years. I live in the Nottingham building, and I'm here today because I'm really upset by the possible approval of the storage place that will take more of these guest's parkings of the Nottingham building. We have already lost nine parking spaces. This open sky storage will come at no cost to a few privileged owners while we, the residents, suffer on a daily basis. I work until late night, and by the time I get in here, there are no more parking spaces available, prompting some, some, some people parking in inappropriate places, which in the future will generate problems with the fire department in the city of the Lauderheu. We want our guest parking back again, thank you very much.
Okay.
Look, I don't have only one storage behind the Nottingham, I have a junkyard.
I, I got it.
Any one of, nobody here wanna have a junkyard in front of your house.
That's true.
Right? I, I'm not a resort, I, I cannot support trailers, jet skis, a lot of motorcycles, making noise in front, in front of my door. That's why I'm here today. I would like, I'm not, I'm not, I guess, if you wanna prove that, that I don't care for me, but I wanna you move that a lot of motorcycles, jet ski, trailer, for one place that nobody, because I pay maintenance like everybody. I don't have a place to park my car, I don't have a place to put my guests. I, I, I mean, very bad for that. That's why I send email, I send email for, for the board, I send email for the people living here. I wanna, you guys help me, because I don't wanna leave a junkyard in front of my, my house, in front of my door.
Uh, sir, 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 please...
I live here sixteen years.
Sir, please address the board, we're the ones that can help right now. Anyway, as I said, when the gentleman first appeared several months ago, and a lifetime ago, actually, it feels like, he proposed, he offered to park his jet ski over by the tennis courts and pay us a monthly rent. I don't know how people feel about that, but it would, okay. Well, well, what I want to know from the, well, I guess from Dan, is what he proposes as a solution to this?
I think we should park the wall in front of Marseille.
Just because foul is there? Come on now.
The, the problem is, an answer to the gentleman's problem. The jet ski, originally, my, my contention is that it was a boat. The board said that they did not agree with that, so therefore, the gentleman had a right to keep it on the property. I don't know where you can put it, be perfectly honest. No matter where you put it, somebody's gonna complain that it's in front of their, their building. As far as the motorcycles are concerned, if you're gonna have motorcycles in residents' assigned parking spaces, then you're gonna have people driving through the, through the community with motorcycles. And I'm sure you've all heard, motorcycles out on the road, they're not a quiet vehicle, they are very noisy, especially if somebody wants to come in late at night on his motorcycle, and he's gonna drive through the community to get back to Marseille, or get back to Heidelberg, it's gonna, it's gonna make a racket. I believe that's probably why the association first decided that the motorcycles all have to be parked up at the front.
But Dan, this isn't about motorcycles, this is about jet ski.
Well, this gentleman was talking about the motorcycles also, but...
But that's not, that's not what's before us, it's just...
Well, my, my, my original contention was that your original rules say that there are no boats or trailers. So the trailer... Sir, sir, thank you. When you spoke, I didn't speak, please give me the same courtesy. Originally, your rules say that there are no boats or trailers allowed on the property. That was the change that was being proposed. If we, if we don't accept this, then the gentleman will have to take his jet ski and put it in a private storage area someplace. The same thing with the other trailer that's up there, he'll have to take it to a private storage area and, and...
Let me ask you this, so, um, the, what's it, Denelson?
Denelson.
Denelson says that the problem now is that there's almost no desk park, parking available. So how many, since this whole discussion first took place, how many trailers or jet skis or whatever are now parked there that weren't there before?
One jet ski, one trailer.
Okay, so it's two spots that you lost, two spots.
Tomorrow, I'm gonna be two, I'm gonna be three, it go, it go. Original, you, I give three spots for the motorcycle, now we have nine spots for motorcycles.
But this wouldn't affect the motorcycles, would it?
No, if there are, there are specific spots labeled for the motorcycle, if they're not parking in those spots, then security should be tagging those cars that they're parked in the wrong place.
There were specific spots there for motorcycles already?
Yes, they're labeled motorcycles only.
Okay, wait a minute, so I'm, I'm not understanding, so, so what is the problem, Dan? The problem is that people are parking motorcycles where they shouldn't park motorcycles?
They are down to fourteen spaces.
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, what is taking up those spots right now? Is it motorcycles that shouldn't be taken, shouldn't be parked?
I was not aware of any motorcycles not parking in the assigned space. This gentleman says that when he comes home late at night, the spaces are taken up.
Motorcycle make a lot of noise, look it.
No, no, that's not, that's not what we're asking, we're asking, are those motorcycles parked where they're not supposed to be? Are they parked where they're not supposed to be?
Are the motorcycles parked where they're supposed to be in the motorcycle space?
Where's the spaces for motorcycles? How many spaces have been locked for motorcycles?
I have, one or two, three, but right now, they are...
Yeah, they're overwhelmed, it's half a dozen.
Okay, so you're saying that motorcycles are parked where the cars should be able to park? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the first, that's the main, that's, that's the first problem I have to deal with, which doesn't have to do with jet ski trailer, I mean, that's a separate issue, of course, but we need to deal with that one first, because it doesn't require any kind of rule change or anything. If the, if the rules state that the motorcycles need to be parked in the designated motorcycle parking, and they're not parked there, but they're taking up guest parking...
Okay, I would like to...
Where is that even? Okay, we have another resident from Nottingham.
One thing, John, sorry. John, I'm Jill, I'm in the Nottingham, and, but I don't see any of the vehicles. But we walked by there last night, and there, there is about nine motorcycles, and they're all covered up.
Yeah.
So are they licensed? Because you have to have a license to be able to park it. They're all covered, like, they're not driven. These motorcycles are not driven. If they were driven, they wouldn't be covered, like, tied, raised out, and that, they're stored there.
They're, they're...
We have, we've punished.
This is a storage issue.
That's what it is.
And you know, there's nothing worse, honestly, I see the three balconies facing that side, I'd be absolutely ticked off to look at that. Oh, those motorcycles, they're not on the road, if they were licensed and moving every day, being used, maybe it would be okay. But this is really a storage issue, number one, and it looks awful, and they're not...
And they're all compacted together, all these motorcycles, it looks like a storage area, and the trailer and the jet ski look like...
Hold on, hold on, can everybody, can everybody hold on, we have a comment from a board member. Rabbit, go ahead.
Can I interject though?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm kind of in agreement, in two different ways. You know, we, we shouldn't be maintaining a storage area. You know, the guy is here, and he hears his jet ski, and he takes it out every day, and wears it back, that's nothing. But he reads for six months, and he just shouldn't be there. You know, we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be a storage area.
Yeah, he's not driving a jet ski to work.
He's a free...
He's not.
They even have the parking space, you know, they got their motorcycle, they go to work in the back, whatever, that's fine. But if you're gonna have a half a bunch of motorcycle there that are covered over and not used for six months, it's a storage area. Now, A, they're parking areas, not storage areas, that's why they got it.
Okay, great, but, but we do have to address that enforcement issue. Like, you have, we have people telling us that motorcycles are being parked where the cars should be, be able to park, and it's not being enforced. So it's, it's just aggravating the problem that the jet ski and the trailer are causing.
Yeah, question. Maybe part of that is not belong to our community. Maybe we need to check the motorcycle.
Maybe we need to check the motorcycle, because I remember when started the issue with the jet ski, it was only three motorcycles, how we came out, nine or seventeen?
Two elf.
Okay, uh, Dan, can I ask you, are these motorcycles on trailers too?